I'd like to call this work-study session of White Bear Lake Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman? Allison? Fahey here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here. All right. We will get into our first discussion item, our strategic plan update and priorities for 2019, 2020. Who's got that one? Dr. K?
Yep. Yep, I'll kick it off. So, I'll just jump right to this. You've seen this graphic before, so we'll talk a little bit about what we did in the last couple of weeks. We pulled together our district planning team. Some folks weren't able to make it who were on the original team, but then we replaced them. So, we had, I don't know, was our number? We got pretty close to 30 participants, which was the original number. And we revisited the belief statements and we revisited the mission statement. There'll be something coming to you later this fall for recommended change to the mission statement. Actually, are they the critical attributes, the bulleted points under the mission statement? Couple of those were changed, but those will come to you later. We heard up, so we got a progress update on the strategic plan and we also heard from our building leaders as well about their work. So, Dr. Allison Gillespie and her role as principal and special assignment is also, as one of her roles is to work as our internal facilitator for the strategic plan. So, she did a lot of work in preparing for this particular meeting. And so, she's going to walk us through each strategy and just give us a brief update as to where we are and where the planning team left it. There were several here, so if anybody wants to jump in and contribute, that'd be great. Ellen was there. Marge had a family commitment, so she had a good time. Ellen chipped in and helped out too, so.
Is it too early for a question? Oh, yeah, that's already going.
No, go for it.
I'm just wondering how strategy number nine
Yep.
came to be added. Was it just, were you reviewing the strategic plan and looking at the existing strategies and noticed that there's kind of a gap or?
Yeah. Maybe we'll let-
A suggestion?
Yep. So, that's a great question. Let's go through the first eight and then we'll talk about nine and how that emerged.
Okay, sure.
Yep, absolutely. And that's, yep, that's what you see the difference in here on this graphic and we'll plug that into the graphic once it's approved by you all, so.
Perfect.
So, we'll come back to that one for sure.
Well, I'm excited to update you on the work that has been done in the district over the past year. It's amazing how much work was done by our building leaders, by our district leaders, and really something that we should be proud of as a district. As we look at each strategy, I'm going to kind of group them together because they emerge as themes when I worked with many different people when they gave me updates on what they had accomplished this past year. So, when we look at strategies one and two, strategy one is we will ensure that each student is the primary agent in their learning. And strategy two is we will provide expanding access to a broad range of opportunities for all students. This is really where the heart of the K-12 learning or the E-12 plus learning experience lies for us as a district and really the convergence with our building plans. So, what I did to step back a little bit is analyze each one of our building plans to show where they converged with our district plan. So, each principal went through a plan with their, basically exactly the same process that we did with the district with their own building, and each site came up with a plan. And so, I analyzed all of them to see where they converged with our district plan. And then where they didn't converge is work that we can embark on or have embarked on as a district to make sure we move the whole district strategic plan forward. So, strategies one and two, there was a really strong convergence with our building and site plans. We had 16 plans that were done last year, including all of our K-12 buildings, early childhood, community services. I think that encompasses them all. And so, really there was a significant amount of work done around the flexible learning time we've heard in strategy one and how really students get control and choice over an aspect of their school day and their learning. And one of the big things that was pushed forward was bear time. You may have heard about that, which was something that we did at North Campus, but also was piloted in all of our buildings towards the end of last year as part of a big sleuth project. So, really to see all of those things converge aligned to a strategy one is pretty powerful work that our district administration and staff worked on. Another area that really emerged strongly was opportunities for us as we move forward around common language and enhancing our instructional framework around strategy one. So, knowing that the districts or the buildings are really moving forward with student agency, how do we make sure that that's enhanced in terms of what we expect for instruction for all of our teachers? And that work is emerging and something that's really organic and happening at the building level and something our building leaders are really proud of.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, please.
I got a couple of questions, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, please do.
So, I think that I understand what bear time is, but could you just kind of let me know?
Yeah.
Tell them what it is?
I just asked my son a question today.
So, bear time looks a little bit different in each one of our buildings, but in essence it is a time during the day that students have choice over different things that are offered in school. So, for example, they might choose to connect with the teacher because they need more help in math or something that happened in a class they missed. They might choose to study with friends in some of our common learning areas. They might choose to engage with the teacher in a special project that the teacher is offering around connecting, around relationships. So, at North Campus, it really spans the gamut. It was 30 minutes once a week for North Campus last year and it will be every single day for 30 minutes this upcoming school year. But South Campus is also looking at it. So, really it's about a small chunk of time during the day and how students choose to navigate that time with connecting with teachers and staff to either get help with their academics or take time to study, take time to connect with friends, and really kind of a pressure release during the day. So, most of our buildings, I believe all of our secondary buildings piloted in the fall or, no, in the spring. And then depending on how it morphs and comes out of their buildings moving forward, it's something that's embedded within their building plan, so all of them are at different spots along that continuum.
Are we piloting anything at the younger ages, like elementary school?
Yeah, there's things called Genius Hour, which is, I would say, what we would consider the equivalent of elementary, and that's in almost all of our elementary buildings. And then each, along with some of our extended day programs, offering different stuff like that. So, yeah, it is, it's really, every single building plan had something mentioned around flexible learning, whether they specifically called it bear time or something else. That was the basis of what it was. Yeah.
I'm just wondering the structure of it because I was at North for up to years. And I know in the past we had advisory different, sometimes it wasn't every day, it was like every Wednesday, or sometimes we had it more. But it took like five minutes out of each class and the schedule shifted on the days we had that. But you couldn't ever change anything that happened during the lunch mod. So, is that still an issue?
Yeah, the lunch mods are a little difficult, but we were able to figure out the schedule for this upcoming year, so all the class times are almost exactly the same with a little bit of flex, a little bit of difference around that lunch period to make sure that we can offer four lunch periods.
Ms. Boy.
So, how much structure is there during these periods depending on what they want to do? Because as I asked my son about it today, he said that usually him and a group of his friends would go and they'd play on their phones.
Well, really, we use a program called Flexi Sched, and so there's any number of activities. The majority of students are with teachers, checking in with student, around whatever the teacher's offering or what, whatever the teacher's offering or the academic, you know, things that are happening in the school. But there is time for kids to, you know, to choose how they navigate that. So, it's definitely a learning opportunity in terms of do they understand, 30 minutes once a week is harder to kind of help kids build those skills. So, I'm excited for North Campus to see what they're able to do this year when it's every single day. But we use a software to help us monitor where kids are checking in, what they're signing up for. But knowing that it was once a week, it was more about helping kids realize that they have choice over that time. And then this year, how do we build in terms of time management like we would as adults? You know, maybe today I do choose to check in with friends and need some time to just decompress, but tomorrow I know I need to check in with my science teacher. And so, those are definitely areas that will continue to grow. But the overwhelming majority of kids were in classrooms with teachers, I would say.
I can see where once a week would be, I can totally see my child going, ooh, free time and doing whatever because he usually didn't have to catch up on anything. But I can see once a day being, he would definitely use that for homework, anything else he was behind, didn't have to do it at night.
It's also shifting the mindset. When I went into it as a leader, I thought of it more as academic supports, but realizing that kids do need time to just decompress and that we're okay with that. And so, but, you know, any, anyone could stop by at North Campus. It's become, I think, one of the most engaging times of the day for kids when they get choice and they're connecting with teachers on different levels. It was really beneficial to both the teachers and the students.
A lot of times they don't have any time during the school day besides lunch to actually interact with friends and everything else. I mean, you can't talk in class because they're doing all these things, so, yeah, exactly.
Mr. Wilson?
You mentioned that one option that students might have would be to connect with a teacher to work on a special project. In that case, would it or could it be a credit-producing activity?
I think the possibility is there. We didn't go as far last year, but, you know, when we think about student agency, how do we help students really look at what that would look like? You know, South Campus had a few students working on projects. It wasn't necessarily correlated to bear time, but it could be this upcoming year. But I think there's a lot of possibilities in how we partner with our counselors and the student and the teachers to make sure that there's creative ways of doing that. I definitely see that there's opportunities.
Dr. Newmaster?
I'm just curious, is it attached to an advisory group that people are with or whatever class they happen to be in this past year when you experimented?
No, it was open. So, for 30 minutes, students signed up once a week on a software called Flexi Sched, and so they weren't, they weren't grouped with a, they had choice.
So, no one took any attendance then at that time except for what was on the schedule?
Yep. So, there's, teachers take attendance through that software, so it shows what students signed up, or teachers have the option of requesting students, and then you can see who showed up where and when and how. You can do the same for some of those common larger groups. So, the media center was used for using our maker space, and there's really, every aspect of North Campus was used and all of our buildings did the same.
Yeah, I remember North Campus was really on the move a lot with that, when we had that.
So, if a teacher wanted to nudge a specific student to come and see them, they could do that through Flexi Sched?
They can, yep. And students get a notice that they've been requested by a certain teacher.
So, I'm assuming that we're monitoring all of that stuff that's going on, all the student activities at the North Campus and the South Campus, and I understand at Central and Sunrise? So, if you can just kind of continue at a future work-study session to keep us updated, I would appreciate that because I just want to know more, you know? I want to, and that way I can ask those questions too when I get home.
Absolutely, yep.
Ms. Fahey?
Just a comment. At Sunrise, when we moved advisory to the middle of the day, where we still had lots to do during advisory, but I know that a lot of, it was just anecdotal evidence, but a lot of staff felt that the kids came into those afternoon classes just calmer because we weren't starting advisory at the beginning of the day, running them through classes, giving them like 20-plus minutes for lunch and then running them into those afternoon classes. So, that kind of time in the middle of the day just to de-stress, and it was teamed up with their lunchtime, really was noticeable to staff that they came into those afternoon classes just with a different mindset and a bit calmer, particularly the middle school kids.
We noticed the same thing. It was more in the morning for us, but it still was the same effect in terms of habits.
Yes, sir.
I would also just like to add that part of, one of the big sleuth ideas that came up last year was the power of play and recess makes kids smarter, and that's really along a similar line. That's another thing that's only happening in tiny little pockets and still being tested out right now, but it's also happening at the elementary schools to give students choice.
Which was part of the update for strategy one and two that we gave the team.
Can I add to that too real quick? So, part of our afternoon PD training with our extended day stat and our elementary recess leads was a active recess training for them to give them more tools on how to organize and keep kids active outside in recess, and so they're ready to learn when they come back in. So, that was another PD opportunity we had today through our SHIP grant. And with this afternoon, we had like 85 people, a little tenants for them, it was a great turnout.
Does that include the flex time folks as well?
Like the middle school?
Yeah.
Yep.
Dr. Newmaster?
Just one more thing is I remember, it's not too long ago, having advisory. So, is advisory no longer then? I remember South dropped advisory before North did. So, they just take attendance each hour and there isn't any advisory with a curriculum anymore?
No. What we've done over the years is we've embedded those learning through our guidance lessons and other aspects, so really flex time takes the place of that. And then we can use, if we need to give an all-school lesson, we would just have students stay in their second period and then we can use that time. So, there's flexibility with us in terms of the schedule.
Prep for math or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Strategy two, also just to highlight, we've had increasing community partnerships and really a focus on authentic learning opportunities for our students. We are examining rigor and how it's defined in our system, looking at how we support all students in achieving that, and that's really our elementary, middle school and high school levels. And then preschool education and how we increase those opportunities. So, work has been done last year and will continue into this next year around that. As we look towards the future of this strategy in particular, it will be enhanced as we look at our facilities and moving forward with that in terms of what types of flexible and student-centered learning opportunities there are for students. Any questions? Any more questions about strategies one and two? So, the next group of strategies is strategy three and strategy seven. They really focus around our community and family engagement. Strategy three is we will foster community engagement and partnerships. And strategy seven is we will engage families as partners in the education of their children. Really, both of these strategies are really strongly aligned to the work that the community services department did in terms of their strategic planning, and Tim led that, and it was, it's really robust and encompasses much of those two strategies. We really see exciting opportunities to engage our communities in an even stronger way. We've had, in the past two years that I've been here, many numbers of opportunities for people to get involved, but really seeing a greater focus on how to do that in an even stronger way. And then looking at increasing opportunities for service learning for our students through partnerships with our buildings and then community services. In particular, flex time, as Ms. Beloit just mentioned, at the middle schools incorporating service learning there, and then how to partner with our secondary high school buildings around increasing more opportunities. And then strategy seven, there was a lot of work around making sure that we really understand what we've been doing to engage our families and where are we strong and where do we have opportunities for growth. Lots of surveys, lots of focus groups, reaching out to families to really gather information. And that team is excited about engaging in a conversation around what could be our framework in White Bear Lake area schools around family engagement. And so, that work is moving forward quickly and really took a lot of time to talk to many, many, many people to make sure we have a good idea of where we are and where we need to go. So, Tim, I know you were a huge part of that strategy, so I don't know if I'm missing anything else, but an additional thing for strategy seven is really looking at adult basic education. That's specifically called out in there, and we have a staff member who will be working strongly on that for this next year.
Basic education meaning?
It's called, it's part of the community services program, and so really looking at different opportunities on how we help adults who are learning English or how we help possibly GED opportunities, things of that nature.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, regarding strategy seven, first, I'd just like to log the committee for articulating that into a strategy for our strategic plan. And my teaching career, the experience was that we were talking about, you know, closing the achievement gap, and generally it's looked at along racial lines. But what I found is the children that came from broken families, well, the families were fine, but if one of the parents was missing or even if they were both married but they're out of the household because of work requirements just so they could survive and they were under the care of, you know, an older sibling, those were the kids that struggled the most, you know, in my experience. And that's just key, that was really involve the family in any way, shape, and form that we can in the education of their children is just very well done by our committee.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, along with, I guess, strategy number seven, what comes to mind is the initiative that we've had over the years of trying to ensure that families that don't have the financial means and so forth have internet connection at home, service at home. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, if we have a feel what the status is of that. I know we had, there was initiatives, I believe, with Comcast in providing low fee or reduced or free service, whatever it was, I can't recall exactly, but I'm just curious where we're at on that, if we have a thumb on the pulse of families as far as connectivity at home.
Steve, you are?
Yeah, we know from some surveys and things, and I honestly, I think this data might be a couple of years old now, but we do know that we have about 96% of our students do have access. So, that is the last 4% is what we're looking at. And we have identified areas that places they can go in public spaces. We've also keep in contact with and keep looking for those opportunities through Comcast and such as far. They're about, it's a $10 a month situation if they qualify for pre-introduced lunch. And, but then there's some hardware upfront costs as well. The other downside to most of those programs is that they require payments annually, and so you, they have to come up with a full $120 per year versus $10 a month, which they might be able to do, but do 120, not so much. And so, we're looking for other options all the time. Mobile Citizen is a company we've been working with, and they granted us 20 mobile hotspots that virtually provide an unlimited internet connection. And we've also purchased another 20, and then we pay for those. And that's, again, it's a $10 a month price structure that we've just covered the cost of now, and this will be our second year doing that. So, we have, we have a flight of about 40 of them that we distribute to schools when there's a counselor or a media specialist in the secondary who would know that there's a need, whether it's their request to them, we try to provide that. We're still not meeting the need, but we're looking for ways to increase that.
Didn't at, didn't at one point we have a relationship with the county to help us out with some of those, Ramsey County?
There was, there was an effort there, but that project never received the funding that they were looking for and has kind of fallen flat.
How far off the need are we?
I would say we could probably cover most of it if we could get closer to like, so we have 40 units now, we could get closer to 100.
So, another 60 units? Okay. Dr. Newmaster?
Have you done any analysis of, yes, they say they have access to internet, but is it, for example, one person's phone? Because sometimes they might have access, but it's really not functional for the kind of homework we request. And especially if you have multiple people that need to read or do assignments. I had kids in the media center that said, well, this doesn't work for us. So, they might have internet, but I think you need to know more detail because you can't just say, oh, good, they're covered.
We have some of that, but probably not.
That's what the other 60 would cost.
Yeah.
Is there some, is there a possibility, have we thought about exploring some grants through the education foundation? I mean, just some quick math, right? We're talking about $7,200. I understand it's $7,200, but is there a way that we can explore some grants to meet those needs for our students?
Absolutely.
Dr. K, I looked at you, you were telling me, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to, I think it's worth exploring. I think it's worth looking into further, absolutely.
I can't remember which of the grants would cover.
It'd be the classroom grants, but I went down a similar path a couple of years ago. And at that time, what the foundation told me is it was possible, but it had to come in as individual requests from the students. You couldn't just put a blanket amount to the district to cover that.
But you could do it by teacher, though.
You could do it by teacher.
But you would only do it, most of those are capped at, what, 3,000 or 2,000? So, you'd have to do-
Depending on-
Several different ones.
Yeah, depending on which one applied.
It's worth a shot.
But we don't want to shoot it down. I mean, it is a possibility.
I just think it's one in many possibilities, right? We should look at all of them.
Right.
If we need 60 more, then we should just try to figure out how we get there, right? Providing internet access to our students, especially with the heavy technology that we're a part of is an important piece, so. Dr. Newmaster, did you have a question?
Well, one other thing we talked about in the past is we kind of seem to recycle through things. Sometimes we've talked about having extended hours, and again, I know media people have extended just because you've got kids that are working there after school. And we used to have avid coaches that met, for example, at North, and then even if I left, they were there till the bus came and just locked the place up. So, a lot of times those were the kids that did need more than what they had at home. So, I think in addition to finding hotspots, anything we can do to extend, I remember we, they had this plan where they handed out a list of where could you go sit, Barnes and Noble, the Y, you know, different places. But I mean, if we had just extended time for kids to get homework done in the school before the late bus for our middle schools and high schools, you know, that-
Yeah, I think it's worth exploring. I think we should analyze how, what the usage is of the, of the device that you're talking about. And also, I think, I don't know how pervasive cellphone ownership is, but that certainly provides another avenue. Using hotspot, personal hotspot is also an option. So, I know some districts have had conversations about Wi-Fi on buses. Some have made the decision not to do that because cellphones are so pervasive that students can just hotspot. So, I think that's a new, that's something worth thinking about as well.
I think it's worth noting that when we just, so if we're playing with numbers, that there's, the $120 annual cost is just for the subscription and the data, and there'd be an additional hardware cost for that hotspot itself. Because 70 of these, and I would say they have about a two-year lifespan, so just plan-
$70 apiece?
Yes. So, plan $35 a year for-
Just say $200 a year per device.
A year per device.
Mr. Chapman?
Well, Dr. Newmaster had raised an interesting point. I'm just wondering if it would make sense to do a bit of a survey of students again just to see how they're accessing this, you know, because, just because people have cellphones doesn't necessarily mean that they have a data plan that is going to allow for hotspot usage to the degree that the students would need at home. So, I'm just wondering if maybe we should do some type of survey to drill a little deeper as to how they are, you know, what they've got and how they're getting this internet access, you know, to the degree of the data that they need to have, just an idea.
Sorry, this one's in.
Dr. Newmaster?
Just to add on to that, a lot of times our surveys, I have the simple little survey monkey or something like that where you really can't make a comment, but I think this has so many variables that somewhere we have to have a place for that kid that's, or that family that's responding where you can make an open question like, what works for you? What do you still need? How, or specifically guiding, how does this work to support your homework? You know, if you're trying to read your textbook on the whole screen, you know, what would you like? What do you need? Something more than just check off, do you have internet or, I don't know, I'm a survey geek, but they need to be able to answer more. I think something open, multilingual.
Ms. Fahey?
I used to just casually collect that information from parents at Open House. It was a perfect opportunity to ask about what access their kids have, you know, in terms of, particularly when we were moving into Chromebooks. And I just casually asked, that was a question I asked parents as they came to Open House. And then I think you'd find that the middle school that I was at was full of kids until those late buses left, and even longer because parents came and picked them up and staff. We often provided, we had a formal homework program, but we provided spaces for those kids after school to work because we were often there working too. So, a lot of them took advantage of that and worked. But with Open House, it was a perfect opportunity to collect that information without having the formality of a fill-in survey that some people wouldn't want to do anyway. So, it was just in a conversation.
Ms. Boy.
So, since we're talking about tech, this may be a little off topic, but we have a lot of blocks in place for, if you're on the Wi-Fi for the school, and I've noticed there's a lot of stuff that the kids need to get to that they can't get to. And I've even noticed on my, on my own that I can't get to stuff that- to, and I've even noticed on my, on my own that I can't get to stuff that, that I need because of some of the blocks we have in place. So I'm sure we have different levels, security levels, correct? Okay. That'll be a different conversation.
That could take a long time. And did it filter in? Yep. And that's going to change in that, so there's...
I was going to say, we must have changed something recently, because there's a whole lot of stuff that I can't access anymore. LinkedIn! That was the one today.
Dr. Lesby?
So then, moving forward to strategy four, which is we will build organizational capacity. Really, this strategy was one of two strategies that the planning team asked to go back to an action team to further develop as we look towards operationalizing what the team had originally put together, which I was one of the leaders of that team. So we really are working with the district to find out what the, what some of the barriers were and how, what makes most sense to bring to what group. And then that will go back to the planning team, which would eventually come back to the school board. But two significant things happened this past year. One was the work that, around instructional coaches and having them at our buildings, that is definitely aligned to strategy four. And then really, as we support our principals in becoming instructional leaders, Dr. Kasma Check put together an instructional cabinet to give district and building leaders opportunities to work together around instruction. So that's still emerging, but that was something that happened last year. And our K five principals are really excited about working together with district leadership around literacy for this upcoming year. So as I talk to people around the strategy, those things kept coming up, the stuff they're excited about. But the strategy will go back to an action team or some sort of team to look at and then come back enhanced. Strategy five is we will, I shouldn't know if I heard, we will embrace all cultures of humility and respect. Last year, if you remember, we created an equity commitment to find culturally responsive instruction and confirmed our four-way equity test as part of our decision-making protocol. That work was with a group of approximately thirty people, following a similar process that we follow with all the other committees that we work with and work that we're really proud about. Opportunities this year emerged with my new position as principal and special assignment, working with equity and continuing to work with that group of people around moving forward strategy five, but also what does, what does leadership around equity look like for the future for our district? And we'll do that in partnership with Equity Alliance and some of the other community partners that we have. Strategy six really was largely accomplished with our comprehensive facility study that we had conducted last year, and will come to fruition hopefully in the upcoming bond election. So really, the next step of that strategy is looking at how do we support teachers and our staff in looking at what flexible learning, how does that impact instruction, and what opportunities emerge from that? And we're working on that, looking at making sure instruction guides what we choose for some of the furniture and classroom opportunities and what that process would look like. That's exciting conversations for everyone to be involved in, but really, a large part of that strategy was accomplished with our comprehensive facility study. And finally, strategy eight, which is we will ensure social and emotional growth for our students. This is the second strategy that the district planning team wanted to go back to get enhanced. I think really the highest priority because it emerged very strongly in all of our building plans. Fifteen of sixteen specifically named this, and the one that didn't specifically named it, it was embedded in other areas. So really, our buildings and sites are seeing this as a priority. And so how do we continue to look at how we define social and emotional learning, which last year this committee worked on, really worked on many, many aspects of this plan, but knowing that it's such a priority for us at the buildings, how, what's the next opportunity to enhance that plan? And so really, the biggest question is, are we ensuring that we look at the whole child and how do we define the whole child at the district? So that work will go back to a district committee that's been working on social and emotional learning and then come back again to the school board once it's been updated.
Questions, Dr. Newmaster?
I would be remiss if I didn't say, I hope you also remember to consider, K five, your library media program as something that supports student agency, provides the learning environment, supports all sorts of things. So I didn't hear it mentioned at all today, and I will say that's an important variable. And it's gone.
Ms. Bull?
So this last one is sort of one that's near and dear to my heart. What, what has been the structure around the plan for that? I mean, I, I hear everybody talk about it, but I don't know what it means. How is it implemented? What are the, what's the structure for the implementation for it?
Socially emotional learning, often he served.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. So this past year, each of the buildings were coming out, as Allison said, around social and emotional initiatives. And so what we were trying to do is really honor the work that was going on at the building level as well as supporting it. And so what we did is we provided a summer training through Northeast Metro 916 called multi-tiered systems of support. And that really addresses some of the socially emotional tiers of support to give the students. And then those teams consisted of a social worker, a school psychologist, the principal, and then a general education person. And they had two days to really work around what does our building look like and how do we address the socially emotional needs of our students from the tier one all the way up to the tier three. And so that works come back to the district, and we're continuing meeting as a system with teaching and learning about how do we shore and systematize this for the entire organization. Some of the other pieces that we worked on are really trying to partner with mental health organizations. And so with our therapeutic preschool, we also are starting a day treatment program at North at Birch Lake Elementary for our customer class students. So just really working and trying to bring mental health supports to the schools, because the students don't always have to leave school to get their supports and their needs met. And so just a variety of tiers is what we're trying to try to get a lot of depth in each one of those tiers for our school buildings.
So then the training that they did, is that something that they bring back by grade to their peers? Does it disseminate that way, or is it just those people that have gone through, have that experience, and we one by one try to get the rest of them through?
Yeah, it's a framework that they have established, kind of like, when we have the different RTI or PBIS models for academics, what we're doing is solidly doing the same thing around socially emotional learning. So how do we support students at the different levels? And so each of those buildings came up with a framework for their building around the work that they're doing. And then that was tying in the building work that they were doing. And then we're meeting as a group, actually, starting next month. We contracted with Northeast Metro 916 to provide a consult to kind of help us through this path, and they're going to really help us shore up each one of those tiers. So we'll see what they need to get their work that they kind of came up with the building work around, and then we'll do something larger as an organization to support that work.
Because it seems like at the elementary level, it's so much easier to do that because you only have one teacher for the, for the student pretty much all day long. But then, once you get into middle school and everything else, you have seven to nine different teachers that may be dealing with one particular child with issues on several different levels and several different classes. So I'm just wondering how that all pulls together. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I'm just thinking, what I've seen happen at Honor and how they took a curriculum and everyone implemented, the kids had the vocabulary, and, you know, they've had programs there with kids with all kinds of issues. But it seems like the school is a kinder, more understanding place when the kids all have that framework in their head. And I don't know if other schools are doing, I wish I could remember the name.
Like Syrach Pro, yeah.
So it's called Second Step. And it's a curriculum that we've had in place, but we have looked at, are we implementing that curriculum with fidelity? And we're looking at some of the barriers as to why that's happening. And part of it has to do with, like, you get a kit of supplies and it's shared across a grade level. And so right now, Tim and I are working with the principals around looking at what the cost would be to increase the availability of the kits. Because that's our core curriculum. And as Lisa had laid out, when you look at MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support, we want eighty percent of those supports to be happening in core instruction or in the classroom. And thank you, Dr. Newmaster, for bringing that up, because the curriculum is one of those pieces for how we make that happen.
Well, PTA gets the lesson every time we meet, every month. So they do a really good job of disseminating it to parents and kids, and I was really impressed. I would think as those kids move on, they're less likely to be unkind, they'll look for the kid alone at the table. And if you embed that with them when they're little, and that's the school field, it's really a good thing.
So as Dr. Lesby mentioned, that the principals are working together, and they're very excited about the focus on literacy. The other key area of focus for them as a collective group that they're going to be working on is this MTSS work. And they're looking at outcomes, looking at screeners they use, and then they're going to be looking at curriculum this year. It's a learning year established for that work. So they're very excited to, as Dr. Lesby said, this is a strategic priority that emerged at all elementary schools, so there's a lot of excitement and ownership about it. And they're really coming together to really be the instructional leaders of that work.
Okay.
That's my update.
All right. And then, so we should, maybe you talked a little bit about how strategy nine emerged. So we'll, we'll start there with new strategy nine, you, Scott, you asked that question. So we will imagine new concepts in learning and teaching at White Bear Lake Area High School. And that, that came through the strategic planning group as well, as an area, it was identified as an area of, of need, an area that we need, we need to visit regardless of what happens with the November election, that this is, this is an area that, that we should focus on, so.
So we worked with a consultant who took us through the process. So I updated on our strategies, and then after each strategy, the planning team decided whether it was sufficient, whether it was already operationalized and we didn't need the strategy anymore, or if it needed to go back to an action team, which I mentioned those two strategies. And then the final question was, do we have additional strategies that we need as we've worked through the big sleuth and the comprehensive facility study? And so this emerged as a need as we examine our high school structure and what that looks like. And being really conscious of not merging two schools if it is in one site or that we are one high school. And so imagining new things, that it's not about north and south campus, it's about what we can be as White Bear Lake Area High School.
So there's a certain amount of that work we can do now, leading up to November, and then depending on what happens there, then it would, again, the work will continue in some fashion as we try to align even better than we have been.
I imagine there's some cyclical review of our strategic plan. Is it annual, biennial?
Yeah, this was...
The superintendent's contract comes up, or no?
No, this happened to be annually, or at least, you know, you approved the strategic plan, it was April of eighteen, so we, then, so what is that, sixteen, seventeen months ago? So about that year, year and a half could be reviewed, yep. And I think one of the important developments this past year was the fact that all of our buildings developed a strategic plan as well. And so it was important to pause and see where, where they did converge, where the site plans converge with the district plan. So in fact, the district's plan could be accomplished by much of what the buildings have, have done and have set as priorities. And then anything that didn't emerge through the building plans, we, we still, you know, we're working to accomplish that as well. So we're in a good position related to strategic planning, we're poised really well, yep.
And all sixteen building site plans updated the planning team as well on their progress last year, and one thing that they're excited for this year. So it was pretty remarkable to see all the work that's been done.
So does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so then, as we look forward to this school year, we talked about the convergence of those building site plans and district plans, and Dr. Lesby talked, I think we actually touched on all of those, so I, unless there's any other questions, I think we'll move on. But this is what was highlighted, or has been highlighted here the last couple of weeks with different groups, and then the new strategy nine, and then obviously the bond referendum is a, is a priority for the year as well. So, so that's where, that's where we intend to place our efforts this, this coming year.
Ms. Vay?
And because I was at the strategic planning update, and I think I mentioned reported at board forum at our last regular meeting, but it was very valuable for me being there and listening to each of those building site plans and looking at how they do mesh with our district strategic plan. I've got copies of each of them, but I would recommend board members, if you're interested in getting a hold of those, they're all on one, one page. Just some brief information, but it really gives you a good overview of what's happening in each of the buildings that meshes with the strategic plan.
I'll send those out.
Yeah, I found it just really helpful being there and saying, oh, yeah, you know...
They're not on the website, then.
So when people ask you, like, "What's the purpose of the strategic plan?", and then the fact that each building did their site plan, it's transforming the district and therefore opportunities for kids and opportunities for staff in the district. So I would really highly recommend you have a look at those, because it really, really helped my understanding of what's going on.
Mr. Chapman?
I think I heard, Joanne, that they're not on the site, but really being put on the website?
I don't think those particular documents would. I'll, I'll get them to you, though, yeah. It was a, you know, it's a working document the principal used to just report out on by us, so, yeah. It would be similar to, you know, mid-year, we see an update from principals, they talk about where they're at, it's similar content to that, I suppose, so, so that could be used as a foundation for that. This type of information they pulled together could be used as a foundation for that report that you get mid-year, because it's pretty similar.
Okay.
Okay, then, so, and I'm not sure how much more you want to talk about this, but this was another agenda item they wanted, we wanted to make sure you were aware of. So, so again, I'll, we've, we convened about a week, actually, no, it wasn't even a week ago, was it? It was like five days ago, yeah. Okay, so this is, this work is just underway. Again, this emerged from that, the district's planning team. So imagining new concepts in learning and teaching at White Bear Lake Area High School, as we mentioned previously, this is a priority for us for the coming year. So I don't know, Alice, if you want to talk a little bit about the day and kind of, you know, the next steps, also what emerged, some of, some of the examples of the work that will, or the information that will guide the work going forward as well.
So similarly, as we've done with other strategic, or all of the strategies, we convened a thirty-member action team to really look at what the strategy means and how that pushes us forward. Teachers at both our high school campuses were able to apply to be on the committee, and this is the one of many opportunities that people will have to get involved in the whole process. And so really, what we did on Thursday was develop draft commitments and parameters that would guide the process. And so thinking about the process around learning and teaching being the center of what students would experience, and then how do facilities come alongside of that. So some of the example commitment statements include, "We will truly imagine and understand the unique and historic opportunity that is before us. We will ensure students are the priority, and we will build each other's capacity to embrace change and support each other in doing what is best for students." And so they did a lot of work and a lot of talking about what issues, what parameters, what, what needs to emerge from this process. So we'll reconvene after, I worked to synthesize all the information that was talked about that day, so that they can read the synthesis, make sure it's an accurate representation of what they hoped as a committee. And then that will really be used as the foundation as we look at really getting into some of those, how do we make this come to fruition then? So next steps will be to reconvene that committee. I'm going to meet alongside our architects in terms of what process they would use to make sure that we're, we're working together. We would invite the architects to hear from the committee, and it's just another step. So depending on the result of, you know, after November, if it is that we have one building, or if it's not, that this, the process would continue forward as we look about what will happen at our high school.
All right. Questions, Dr. Newmaster?
I just want to know, we've had such great student input before, and we graduated on one fine member of the strategic plan committee at least. Did you get a good handful of kids to, to be on this?
I have some kids. We have to figure out how to get more. That was one of the draft commitments, but we did have some kids participate with us. It was a little challenging with school coming up and sports starting and stuff, so we'll...
Well, it's hard for them to miss all the time during the school day, if that's what it needs. But their insights were so good the last time.
Absolutely. And the buildings and sites felt that too. So we'll figure out different ways. That was one of many commitments and conversations that the planning committee had, knowing that we want to get more student voice.
So they're the agent.
Absolutely, yep.
Other questions, comments, concerns? All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, so then, back to you, Don, that brings us to this.
So, perfect, so I'm...
So, okay, so I'm going to read the statement then. This portion of the meeting will be closed to consider strategies for labor negotiations, including labor strategies or developments and/or discussion to review the labor negotiations proposals pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D03. And then the fourth thing on there with the, the other portion of the meeting would maybe close to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision 3A. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn into closed session.
I'll second that. We adjourn.